And then just hit record again.
I got you.
Then I'll come back this afternoon, you guys are gonna, I'll just give me an idea like you got thirty minutes.
Okay, sounds good Tom, thank you.
Alright, everyone, welcome back. Welcome back.
Yes.
You look out of breath, man.
I get my payroll.
Um.
That's exhausting.
That is exhausting. Thank you for coming back so quickly. So, um, we have all of the strategic results up there, you have eighteen so far.
Yeah. Wow.
Right? That's, that's a good number, but getting to the bigger side of, you know, remember that each one takes effort, right? Each one takes resources, each one takes time. And, um, so I really wanna encourage you to, if possible, really limit the, the, the goals in good government too. Maybe a couple if you can. Alright. Never mind.
Manny's got a list.
I saw that. You mean, I'm pretty good with bylaws, I think that was really no way.
That was a hiss.
That was, that was a hiss. Alright, well, very good, so, so let's talk about good government. What, you know, what comes to mind for you, um, you know, about good government? Steve, obviously this is your bailiwick and we really want you to weigh in.
Sure, but I wanna hear from these guys first.
Okay. Council members, what do you, what do you think of when you think of, what, what does good government look like? That some kind of change?
Establishing the policies that, that help us run streamlining. Making it easier and more effective for these guys to do their daily tasks without having to go through all the red tape. There's ways to kinda look at things, I think, in a different way.
Okay.
You know, um, I don't know where to start, because I guess I got much stuff.
Taming.
Go ahead, if you want.
Taming our specific ordinances, rules and regs that exemplifies in the community. Because our community is unique.
Mm-hmm, of course.
Not unique in, in the sense that we're way different, but establishing rules and regs that, uh, enhance our community and rules and regs that our community will be able to follow.
I think it's what results in a good, um, customer experience, for one thing. Or, or that's what I'm, that's the primary goal for me, is that they walk away going, they may not agree, but they know they were felt, dealt with fairly professionally, um, you know, without bias and any kind of towards them by people who knew what they were doing.
Okay.
Competence.
And I think our staff does an amazing job all the way around.
Okay.
And I think our, our goal, our goal is to, to keep them, to give them all the tools that they need.
Right.
You know, as times change and they progress, things come up. And we've, we've run into some things, like I've said earlier, some of the things were still unpicked, undigitized, you know, um, to make it just more streamlined, you know, to do their job efficiently, without having to go through twenty steps to get to the same goal. You know, if we can eliminate some of those steps from, and I think Steve's identified quite a few as he just observes, and he's like, this might be out of date, maybe we need to move forward. Try to get a little bit of technique here and do that. And that's where we come in and say, go for it, you know, let's, let's do that. But my biggest concern on a lot of it is, and is mostly standards and practices. We need an establishment across the board that is consistent. Um, everything kinda jumps, there's still a few things that still jump around. One of my, my big concerns is on our boards and commissions, and I spoke with Steve on some of these. And we've made some strides forward of, of getting unique questions for, because we appoint to the boards.
Right.
So we ask for, um, interview questions that were pertinent to their board for who they can get. And, uh, to who they wanna put it on the board. So we, because we don't know exactly that true, true function of each individual board.
Right.
Okay. You know, but, so we wanted to make sure they're getting the qualified applicants that they need. Well, a little bit of blowback that I, that I was, was that they have bylaws and they have service structures. You know, that they, that required, um, that they require to be on that board. Well, and in our current situation, we have a general citizen interest form, or board. Fill it out and get on board, you know, interview you and put you on. Well, apparently that's not what they're wanting. So each board going through has specific requirements. So what I would like to see is something that, where they have their own application. When they click on that link, it goes to a new application pertinent to that board that says, and it pre-bets them. Because what we're finding out is we're putting people on the boards and then they're either removing them, or they're, or they're quitting.
Okay.
And I'm finding more and more, um, I actually just got a phone call yesterday, as a matter of fact, that two of our current board members that we just appointed wanted to leave. They were not sent any emails, no welcome, no orientation packet, nothing. It was pretty much, it's, it's just true neglect across the board on that part. And that, I don't believe falls on us in our positions, because we're not managing the boards. To me, this is where we need to either educate the chair, that they need to be in more of a leadership role. Welcoming their board member, educating their board member, and getting them prepared to be a board member. Instead of just saying, your meeting's on the first Monday of the month. And that's not doing anything, so I would love to see us be able to set as a standard in there that goes through that, here's your welcome packet, here's your description, here's what we do. You know, here's our mission, here's our vision. And sit down with them and say, you know, if there's any questions for you, for us, please feel free to ask. And by sitting back and watching these meetings, I'm not seeing that. When they try to open up and they try to ask questions, they're shut down immediately. Um, they're not following from the other ones that I was watching, it is just a free throw.
Really?
And I know I can get moved. But when it's the entire board, all speaking at once.
Yes.
There is nothing getting done. You know, there is no control, there's no order, you know, and it's just like, wow. And I don't blame anybody for walking away from these boards when they get on them. You know, comments have been made that if they're not, um, if they're not qualified, we don't need those people. Instead of saying, hey, you have an interest to be in government, you wanna be a part of our city, you wanna be a part of our board? Let's teach you how to be part of our board. And foster that next generation that's gonna step up at a point. And that's not happening in our boards. And I, I really feel that that's where we're failing, because our boards do do a lot. They can do a lot. They have a lot, a lot more power than what they believe. They can accomplish so many things outside of the city. And it just really bothers me that we are not utilizing that way to their full potential.
Is that your experience?
Yes, yeah, I mean, arts and culture, when I started liaising with them, they had no real concept of what they were doing. Didn't understand, um, really Robert's rules of orders or the importance of it, or, and so we've been working, you know, over the years now, I've been working with them so now that they focus on what their job is when they make decisions and they, if they start feeling like they're going outside of that, they stop themselves. And well, is this really part of what we're supposed to do, or is this more appropriate for another one? So I feel like they, they do understand that. Um, I, that's the one that I've been working with most closely over the years, so I can speak with some, you know, authority about that. Um, but I agree with Manny that we are missing a huge opportunity for citizen involvement, citizen satisfaction with what we do by not using boards and commissions the right way. We, we're, it almost felt like in a prior administration that it was an annoyance. We have to have boards and commissions and, I'm like, these people are coming down to City Hall in the afternoon, they have better things to do. They're there to help us, so let's help them help us.
Life would be so much easier without all these citizens around.
Right. No, you're missing.
I mean, I'm joking, that's.
No, I know, but that's what I would feel like, no, that's the opposite way, that you're supposed to be thinking of this.
Well, and one of my other concerns is, and this is something I observed in, because I started watching other boards going through. And this one really hit me, was that the criticism of the city, the criticism of the staff, when they are representing our city at that moment, sitting in that chair.
Yep.
And these are their chair, our chairs.
They were using it for criticism.
Yes, and, and no, just reckless disregard to any of the reputations of our city and not helping to foster to build us up as we try to build them up. And that really, really frustrated me. I'm like, you are the, you at that moment are wanting to travel, you are wanting to go to conferences, you're wanting to go to these different things as a face of Trinidad. You are representing us, and if you use the same rhetoric that you do in these meetings, what does that say about us to other communities? We are very supportive, I believe, and, and from sitting back, and I knew. So, sitting back and watching for years, watching the, the current council and the previous council, they bend over backwards to support these boards, to help them get their goals accomplished. And yet there still is criticism. And instead of building us up and working as a team, it's almost like a great divide.
So, are, is your, your sense, um, that the people that you're observing doing that, that they got on and then they became better? Or did they get on the board in order to?
I think it's a combination.
To take the opportunity to criticize.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I, maybe as we approve these strategic goals, priorities, we could have a moment where we rethink our boards and see how they fit within these things and we give them direction.
So, so one of the things you could do, right, is to say, by someday, um, the, the roles of boards and their officers will be clarified. Uh, you can provide board training if you want to, um, to try, to try to clarify what their role is, right? I mean, if there's that much chaos in meetings, they don't know what the role is, right? But also about, you could also, uh, that training or that, those briefings or orientations could also include, uh, meeting management. I mean, that doesn't mean they're gonna do that, however, but, I mean, you can begin building that into your interview process.
And we did just do a board training last week.
Did you?
Last month.
Okay, great.
Yeah, and we trained on all these things, um, including sections of our code that, um, requires them, um, as an ethical provision to not badmouth, not speak bad about the community. And we've tried to get that word out.
Wow.
But I think, I see more people who are already disgruntled, frustrated, and then they wanna apply to get on.
To get on the board for, to have a platform.
But then there is an element of groupthink, where I think people get on boards and they think, oh, I'm here to help, and then there is a lot of negativity and that can be contagious.
I think our, our training is basically procedural.
It is.
We, we train them on the processes, but we don't train them on, where are you going with all this? What, what do you, we, what do you, the city council want you to do?
That's true.
What's your motive, if you have one?
Yeah.
Well, you have that experience with the one, the one board that you're on, which is that you have to bring them back quite a bit, right? Yeah, but that's because I, I realized when I got into politics, it was more inviting than I thought it was.
Would it be?
But I didn't know that that was gonna be.
No matter what. Sorry.
That's okay.
Yeah. Our conversation.
Wouldn't, would it be appropriate to ask each board and commission to create their own mission statement?
I know.
You need to give it to them, I think.
No, no, we give it to them.
But a code of conduct, I think it's gotta be something, I think would be the, I think I wrote it down here, a standardized code of conduct for all the boards. You know, and a required ethics training, truly ethics training, saying, you are on this board as that chair. You are liable for what you say. And showing them that there is liability here as well.
You know, you said, you go liability.
They can create it.
I think they can create.
Potentially they can create legal liability.
I don't think people realize that we're, we're really on the same team.
Yes.
And they're, and they, you know, they, initially, like we were saying, it's a lot of infighting, right? But people don't know that we're, we're, we're going for a common goal. We're not, just because you're a Democrat and I'm a Republican, that mean we're supposed to be fighting each other and
Right.
nitpicking at each other's thing, you know, we're, we're really, even though we're coming out of different bags, we're, we're coming out of different bags that have the same interest, going in the same direction.
I, I think this is, and I may be wrong about this, I've been wrong before, so I've been told, but this is an area that is distinctly under the purview of city council. I don't think staff is well-designed to retrain our boards. They're, they're to support the board, they're there to provide whatever the board needs to do what it's supposed to do. But what they're supposed to do is up to us. And I think it, it might be worth, we have never done this before, but maybe we could have a task, what is that called? A task?
Task force.
Task force of some people on city council who are interested, who would sit down and come up, develop a plan of how we're going to revitalize, change the way our boards function so that there's a very clear understanding of everybody what the roles are.
Do we have any disciplinary actions?
We do.
And, and that they understand that they serve at the, at the pleasure of council. So it isn't that we have to go through a major, they, if they understood that going in, they would understand if we decided that you, your service is no longer needed, they wouldn't have a conniption, which is basically what they're doing now.
I've just been writing a lot of stuff.
Okay.
So, um, this is a, a real problem that the staff brought up, right? Uh, I, I read everything to you that they said. And it was really heartfelt, I mean, they're hurt by this and they're frustrated by it. And, and, and that's not to say that, you know, staff don't get frustrated with, you know, elected officials or appointed officials. There's sometimes some natural low-grade tension, sometimes in terms of those roles, right? So that's, that's not terribly uncommon. However, some of the comments were really direct.
Yes, they, I'm.
About, you know, boards really telling staff, you know, criticizing them in public.
Yeah.
Uh, telling them what they had to do.
Yeah.
And that's not the role of the, the board or commission, they're, they're really to advise you.
We had, we had one, um, board chair who challenged our clerk about open meeting law.
Yeah.
That she decided that, under her own interpretation of open meeting law, that she did not have to comply with the direction that the city clerk or the city attorney was giving that person. And we were like, um, no, that needs to be very clear to them that they take direction as due processes from our staff.
Well, and the legal aspects of that, right? That.
Yeah.
I mean, that's why you have Les over.
Correct.
Yeah.
And that's why you have a, a city, you know, clerk that knows what she's doing, and you have a very good one, by the way.
Absolutely.
We had one of our board members in our board training, um, get into pretty heated dispute with the city attorney about a certain process.
Is that right?
Yeah, in front of everybody. And, um, it was, it's frustrating, because that should be a private conversation, but unfortunately, a lot of these people wanna take it to public conversations, and I don't know if it's a goal to shame us or, or what, but it, it is frustrating. Um, oftentimes, they won't come sit down with us and have the conversation, but they'll go all over social media or take opportunities in the public to, to really, you know, criticize, and that, that makes it really hard for us as well.
Really?
You said that these boards serve at the leisure as a council?
The pleasure.
The pleasure, right? Is it, does that mean, and help me understand, is I, I have, does that mean you could just remove somebody?
Yes.
Yes, and you have.
And you have, okay.
Unfortunately, it's trickier than that here, because our charter says they have to be removed for just cause. So, there isn't.
It says two things, it's a, it's a complicated thing, and Les has explained it to us, it says more than one thing about that.
It's not a process that any of us wanted to do.
Right.
It was very hard on council to do that.
Yeah, I was looking at it this the other day, let me read you what it says, um, because I think it's really important that we all understand this. Here, just a minute. City Charter, here we go. One second, I'll look it up.
Well, it's hard to fire a volunteer, sometimes you have to.
Okay, here we go, Boards and Commissions. Here it is, okay, so the ordinance does say something different, but the charter supersedes. And what the charter says is, um, I just read it the other day, because I was curious and I was doing some benchmarking. Uh, "Members of Boards and Commissions shall be subject to removal for just cause by a majority vote of the council."
But then later on in that section, it says that they serve at the will of council can be removed.
They serve at the pleasure, right?
Yeah, they do serve at your pleasure, but, I mean, I don't, to me, it doesn't get me clear that "Members of Boards and Commissions shall be, shall be subject to removal for just cause by a majority vote." I, I don't know, I didn't see anything that just gives you all carte blanche authority to remove somebody, but I could be wrong.
Do we have the authority if it is, let's just say it is the chair, to strip that position but not remove it?
That's harder.
Yeah, that is.
To be like, you're no longer the chair. If you're gonna act like that, we need somebody else, or something, you know, you're able to stay on the board, but I don't, I just, I don't know what course of action to take.
Let's move upstream, and try to prevent that from happening.
That's why I figure if we, that's why I wrote it the way that I did, because it was. And, and, and.
Right, so, so, one thing, right, um, and. This could be, you know, a question for Les, can you ask them to sign something? Right?
Well, I think they get the opportunity to resign.
Yes.
Versus, that's true, being fired, yeah.
Fired, like they get, they get the opportunity to do, to not be public shame.
In both cases. It's not a pretty process.
It's ugly, yeah.
It's very ugly, it's not for the good of the community or council. And the two that we got rid of last year
Yep.
prompted a large majority of people new to the community to run for city council.
Well, and I think, Seren, you brought this up, about having to take an oath?
Yeah.
Because we have to, we have to take some type of oath to, you know, we have to take our oath for city council.
Yeah, well, that makes sense.
And, you know, to be on that board.
Makes sense.
Some level of commitment and to know that I will uphold this by the rules, the regulations, ethics, da-da-da-da, and that holds them a little bit more live.
That's even better than signing something, you know? Well, um, I, I would say be really thoughtful about who you choose. You know, if there's somebody that's been part of the online, you know, hate group? No. Don't let them, don't let them on. I mean, just say no. You know, we know about your online presence and, you know, that's not gonna be helpful to whatever the mission of that board is. Just say that, be honest with them. It's like a hiring process, right?
We should get them better.
I am, I'm, I'm suggesting, you know, we, oh gosh, you know, so many examples of this. So there's a, there's a county commission in, in Oregon, I won't mention the name at the moment, but there was a, there was a, a fellow who was elected and his opposition party did not research him at all, neither did his own political party. And he got on, and after he was on, it was discovered all kinds of, uh, white nationalist racist stuff on his Facebook. I mean, it was bad.
That was in the national news.
That might have been, he's still on the commission. Right? Nobody voted him. In the public.
It was bad.
Can I ask a quick question about your boards? I don't know what boards you have. But when you, are they, so, my question is very high level, but do we have, or do you have an opportunity, given the strategic plan, to really look at those boards and align them to achieving these goals? And does that mean some restructuring and some reshuffling? And it's not done as a reaction to somebody, but as a response to this new direction that the city council is taking? And does that give you an opportunity? And I don't know the answer to that, but I'm just throwing that out there.
I think definitely it does.
Is, is staff, what does staff feel? I'm, I'm reading some of their comments about boards and commissions, but
Yeah.
Do, do, do staff, does staff feel that we have boards and commissions that aren't necessary anymore?
I think.
Good question.
We are at that, that part right now, where we're going to have everything right now, like, we're racking it up. We've looked at some boards, we've looked at some board members, and I think as a council, we've already kinda been through that, where we're weeding out the.
We haven't made any decisions?
Yeah, we haven't made any decisions, but we're, we're, we're there, yeah.
Yeah, I, there, some of them are statutory, so, you know, you have to have them. But, um, in general, I don't think it's the boards that we have prescribed. I think it's the effectiveness of some of the, the way they function, that is the concern.
It's not their, their structure or their purpose.
Right, it makes sense to have a Parks and Rec board, for example.
Yes.
But, you know, it's, it's about how do we empower them to really assist you all, honestly, in your decision-making? You know, and I'll, I'll just give you a disconnect, we're redoing Central Park, um, the baseball stadium, but we didn't have a Parks and Rec board come talk to you all.
Right.
Um, and I'm not sure that would have mattered, but, just an example.
Did they weigh in on the park redo?
I don't know, I, did they?
We weighed in, but we didn't have enough information, it was kinda in tandem, where we knew from the few years that the park needed to work, and we didn't know what specific until we had a meeting with the specialty specialist to say, this is what you guys need.
I had a Parks and Rec board member actually come to me.
Yeah.
Uh, actually, it was two of them, and they were talking to me about, they feel like they are going nowhere.
Okay.
So, they have all these conversations, and then they feel it goes nowhere.
Well, maybe.
Yes, that's true.
So, I think what's going on, I think like he said, it was having them come to speak with us gives them purpose.
Yeah.
You know, like, they're like, well, okay, we are getting heard, without realizing they're getting, you know, without us realizing we need to hear them.
So, there, there's a point of accountability, right? Do, do you have the boards and commissions?
I don't know.
Come and speak to you every quarter, or come and speak to you and report to you what's going on and get your, get your guidance?
I feel like we should talk about that maybe as a strategic goal. Um, what I'd love to see is they, each board and commission comes to you all twice a year. At the beginning of the year to tell you what their goals are, and at the end of the year to tell you their accomplishments based on those goals that they, they set. And it really puts them in the hot seat going into the next calendar year of, you know, oh, we need to have a, maybe a special work, work session to establish our twenty twenty-five goals that we wanna focus on. Then come to you all, get feedback from the council, you can say yay, nay, or hey, we're already doing that, whatever. Um, then at the end of the year, they come give you a report saying, okay, here's the, the goals we agreed upon with you all, and here's how, what we were able to accomplish, something like that.
They may be trying to take on way too much as well, they may be going down sixty projects.
That's true.
That's usually what's going on.
And, and that makes it challenging, when they're too in the weeds on things, then they're not focusing on higher levels.
And they're, I'm a Parks and Rec, so, there, there are results.
Yeah.
They don't understand how the speed of government is, so they could be like, okay, you know, we're ready to rock and roll, I'm like, ah, that's gonna take a minute. We gotta talk about money, you guys get seven of us to agree that this is the way to go. And they're like, no, we need the concrete, we can, we can do this, it's treason, we need to be cut it. It's like, no, that's not how that works, we need to, it needs to be seven of us to agree that this kind of money is worth. So, a lot of these boards, they're working, but they, when it gets to us, they don't understand. So, a lot of these boards, they're working, but they, when it gets to us, they don't understand. We have to do our part to make it concrete.
Seems like.
Does it seem like, maybe part of, I, I witness conflict in nonprofits a lot. And oftentimes, maybe ninety-nine percent of the time, the reason for that conflict stems in one area. And that's understanding roles.
Yeah.
And clarity, and then, basically, process is what you're talking about, but. It sounds like your, your boards are creating their own priorities, where, and that's causing this conflict. Where the council really needs to kind of take hold of the reins and say, these are our priorities, Parks and Rec. We need to create a Parks and Rec department, we need to do X, Y, and Z. And, from the implementation planning, there'll be things that you can hand off to that board to work on. But that, they're not coming up with the priorities like you're saying necessarily, is that, is that?
Yes.
They have the priorities, because as far as Parks and Rec, they have, they have a spreadsheet or a.
Yeah, but did they make the priorities, or did the city council make the priorities?
They did, not the city council.
So, that's what I'm saying, that is, that is the root cause of maybe some of a lot of the, the.
It's going in the, it's going in the wrong direction.
Going in the wrong direction, and that's causing the conflict. And so, taking, taking control of that process and making, helping people understand, the council's gonna set the priorities and pass on those tasks.
Backwards.
And then, you know, there might be some, it's priorities, there's a lot of play in the strategy.
They think, they think that they're the priority makers, because they're the board of the Parks.
They think they're policy.
Right, and then they say, liaison, take this to. The council and then let them know what's what, and I'm like, well, that's not, that's not how that works.
That's right.
But that's our fault. That's our fault, that we haven't clarified that for them.
Right. But, they're supposedly the feet on the ground.
Right, but that's because they don't, we haven't said to them what it is that we expect them to do. So, they are just saying, oh, okay, Parks and Rec, what do you think, what do you think, what do you think? What else are they gonna do? If we don't give them any direction, they're gonna just be like, okay. Let's figure this out.
One thing you can do, uh, just picking up on what Darcy said, let's say it's the Parks, Parks Board, whatever, right? What's it called?
Parks and Rec.
Parks and Rec. You've got, you've got some goals over here, about safe and clean and all those things, that's what they should be working on.
They should take cues from our goals.
Yes.
And then, sort it out.
So, they can, sorry, yes.
And then come back to us and say, okay, this is what we're doing.
Right, so you're.
Per, per your advice.
Right, so, you, you, you know, this will give not necessarily every board, but the plan will, will perhaps say something to each of the boards. Potentially, say, you know, we're looking for parks that are safe and clean, let's work on that. That's what we want you guys to work on this year. You know, if you've got something here, and you can give them that direction, and as Darcy said, there's a lot of latitude around that. But, that's, that's the priority here, that we want to ask the Parks and Rec board to work on.
Give them, give them the.
So, i- if you look at, um, Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, in our ordinance, it requires them to come up with a master plan every five years. And that was, they came to us last year or the year before going, wait, what? We don't know how to do this, we don't have the money to do this, will you please hire someone so that they can do this for us? And, it's in those moments that we should realize, this is asked backwards.
Yeah, yeah.
Couldn't you say it better?
Yeah.
If you're asking a lot of your, your volunteers, and giving them little direction, and that's causing conflict. If you can clean this up, you're going to clean up all that negative and the drama and all this stuff.
Well, most of it.
Most, yeah, you always have some.
There'll be somebody who gets in there to assist.
Well, that too, and then politics, of course, because we've changed so many hands of board members. As soon as you think you've got a, got a grip on it, oh, we have a bunch of new board members, so.
Well, and that's one thing is that we're, and that's what kind of prompted all this, was when I started, when I started, there was always a concern of vacancies. And we're still sitting at vacancies. You know, so we have seventeen openings on our boards, that's a lot, and we have one board that's not filled at all, right? That's the zoning and planning appeals board? Did I say that right? That is not in existence, because we don't have anyone on it.
That's not a problem right now, actually, that is an incredible opportunity to gain access.
So, we have, then all of these are empty, but. As we fill them, they empty again, okay? So, we've got some type of cycle, and there's, there's no retention plan, there's no recruitment plan. We haven't, they haven't, we haven't come up with any of that, and I don't know if that's on us, or is that on that board for retention?
It's on you.
Yeah, to figure out what we need to do, how to keep them on those boards, and I think we have so many vacancies, because we do have boards that I believe can be adored. You know, I know the ones that we, there's some that we have to have.
Yeah.
But they can be combined, you know, to have a couple of extra things like arts and culture and historic preservation.
Sure.
You know, I, I don't, I don't know if that would be overwhelming, but the idea if we combine those boards, that would save us, that's what, seven people? That maybe utilize somewhere else or be willing to go to a board, the appeals board, you know what I'm saying?
I think when you're thinking about appointing board members, right? You now have direction or you will, and instead of just looking for somebody who wants to be on a board, you're gonna say, this is what we have to accomplish. Who in the community can help us do that? And you're gonna proactively find those people versus them coming to you because they have a beef, right? And you're gonna be specifically aligning those. Just boards, with people who can help you accomplish your goals. And, I don't know, I think the fact that you have so many vacancies is good, because you can, you have an opportunity to fill them in the right way versus. Waiting for people to leave or having to fire somebody, and so.
I think that's what's been going on. And we're just not getting the applications, that's the other thing.
Well, I, I look at it from the outside, and that, I, watching what's happened with us and boards the last few years, why would anyone apply?
Yeah.
So, that's a good question.
That is a good question, just that.
What you'd like to see is people lining up, good people.
Yeah, yeah.
Well-intended people lining up to be on your boards.
That's true.
Board descriptions, I think, would be great, like, I think that's what you're saying, kind of like when you apply for a job, you know what you're looking for, and these are your requirements that we're looking for.
Yes.
Treat, treat it like it's a hire.
Got it, yeah, I'd say like that.
Not a volunteer.
Right, treat it like it's a hire.
Why, I have a question. Are our boards? Each individual board, is there too many board members on these boards?
Good question.
I mean, they range from five to seven, so.
Oh, that's, that's.
I think what I'm proposing is that, I think we need to overhaul this entire, um. Part of our governance, and understand, we're kind of allowing. The function to, to, instead, it's a form and function kind of, um.
Yeah.
Analysis that we need to do, and I think we could, we could streamline our ordinances about them. They could be very bullet pointed, this is the purpose of this, and these rules apply to all boards, this is how you're gonna appoint, or you're gonna, um, give the city council input on who you want to be. Here's how it will happen, that when you are on a board, you will be giving a, a packet of information that will explain. Particulars about the board, so that they know that they're well-supported in the work that they're trying to do on our behalf. And that we are not at odds with them, we need them, we want them. And that will be, and that, the help that they will be providing us will be very directed help.
How long do you need to be able to do this?
I could do it today.
So, can you say by January one, twenty twenty-five, this is gonna happen?
Yeah.
I think so.
I think we can make that happen.
It's, well, we call, we're not calling it up overall, it's just gonna be a gradual. Change to keep the scene of service.
It's gonna be that Karen's gonna appoint a task force of people on city council who are willing to do this.
I, I think it has to be the council.
Yeah, exactly, but.
It has to be the council.
I would envision that that task, task force would work with the city attorney and the city manager for direction, and then propose, here's how I would change our ordinances. Here's how city council proposes to change the ordinances, so that they, it, this, the, what we're trying to have them do actually happens.
This is a really fundamental part of putting your own house in order.
Yeah.
It's more streamlined, ain't it?
Mayor, I think I know who the believer is I'm talking to.
So, let's, let's, let's try this language. Would you, would you help us council?
By January first, twenty twenty-five, a city council task force. Can't read it.
We're sorry, we'll define the roles.
We'll define the roles of boards and officers.
Uh, yeah.
Be clarified.
Yeah.
We'll be defined as better.
Okay, we'll define the roles of boards. It, that, that first sentence is, that first phrase there is all.
We'll define the roles of boards and officers. Take that out. Take out clarify two.
Oh, sorry.
No.
I totally messed up, so. Define the roles of boards.
And officers.
And officers, that's gonna stay up to date.
Take out clarify.
Clarify.
Training will be provided to include meeting management, code of conduct.
Sorry.
And direction from council to align missions with strategic plan with accountability metrics. I think the last part could be that, um, with, with goals.
Yeah.
And reports back to the, to the council.
I'll rewrite this, sorry.
I, I would say that the purpose of the task force would be to propose changes to our ordinance that would direct that these things happen. Clarification of board roles.
Sorry.
Because that's definitely measurable, rather than just, so here's an idea of what we kind of think, no, we think this, this ordinance.
Change, change our ordinances in order to make those things happen.
A city council task force will change.
Change the ordinances. To define the roles.
Propose changes to the ordinances. To.
To.
Effectuate, you know, board clarifica, clarification.
To define.
Okay.
I, I suggest define as much.
This is lawyer talk, right, huh? It's true, it's tight.
Define and clarify, define and clarify board roles.
And responsibilities.
And responsibilities, it's good.
And then maybe period training will be provided.
And, well, the changes to the ordinance will do that.
Okay.
And then, I think the training and all that other stuff will come from.
From that.
That, the changes that are proposed.
Do you, do you want, do you want to add something about, um.
The.
Aligning their work to the priorities of the council.
Yes.
On an annual basis.
So that. Board work is aligned with.
The board's priorities and strategic plan.
Yeah, with the council's priorities.
Sorry, I said board.
Yeah, sorry. Well, it's a time of need.
I want that.
It's listed in the charter.
Yeah, the charter versus what we actually have.
Yeah. Liquor authority, that's us, that's city council. Our Parks and Rec.
I like the way that that's done though. It reverses, it reverses the, the responsibility from the board to the council to give the, give direction to the board. Then that makes, that makes it digestible for everybody.
I would say, board and advisory commission roles, because we are not going to do this for planning and zoning or for historic preservation, because those are quasi judicial and we don't.
Exactly.
We don't, we don't make changes to that without.
And the urban review authority would be the other one.
Yeah, so these are our boards and advisory commissioners.
Yeah.
Historic Main Street is quasi-government as well.
Not judicial, quasi judicial is the problem. We don't want to get into that, because that, those are the, we have, they have to make findings that we review.
That's exactly right, and you're the appeal board too, for your decision-making.
But these, the, the ones who are supposed to help us in the work that we do, that's what I'm trying to get at.
Yeah.
Parks and Rec, arts and culture, library, um, what are the other ones? Main Street.
So, will the ordinance clarify that there'll be goals set for the beginning of each year, and?
I think that kind of stuff is more.
You could delve that into the ordinance, okay?
By annual reporting?
Yeah. Because this is the, what is a doable task for us is this, I think.
Yes, it is. And you can change that this fall?
Yeah.
This, this is really a big deal.
It is, and I'll, I'll give you a great example of where I see this working well, is, you know, there's some disconnect, I would say, on the authority. Perceived, at least by the lodging tax advisory board. They feel like they have hundred percent control over the money, and it's their final decision as to how it's spent. Which is precisely why we changed the ordinance last year. So, it's not true statutorily, they're just advisory, their job is to advise staff and the council on how to budget and spend lodging tax revenues. But their, you know, mayor's been there a couple of times, I mean, they're in the weeds on, okay, should we allocate five thousand dollars to this?
To this ad or whatever.
To do this, to do that, yeah. And that, that really is too in the weeds for what an advisory board should be doing.
But it, I remember when we were changing that, one of the things that, I believe Marty brought up, is that there are decisions that have to be made.
Yep.
Day to day.
That's true.
They can't wait for the council to decide, so if they have an amount that's part of their authority is this, then they can make those decisions.
That is fine, yeah. So, for example, we spent sixty thousand dollars of lodging tax to hire Vista Works, our company that's gonna promote and advertise. We also have about a hundred thousand dollars, a little more, um, in that same line item to authorize for targeted ads and promotion type material for turnout. That's where I think, yes, they, they can discuss and say, okay, we want to do an ad for this event. Um, then we would, staff would negotiate pricing, move forward if that council's authorized that budget. But, for example, there's also a hundred and fifty thousand dollars sitting in a quality of lifeline item. Um, I think you all should be deciding how we spend that, and it's not just a hundred thousand dollars for them, just to have access to. Yeah.
Yes.
So, but I'm, what I'm saying at the end of the day, though, is working with a board like that at the beginning of the year to establish annual goals. Gives that opportunity so they know what to focus on, and you all do too.
Right, awesome. So, a- as you said, council member, what you're doing is you're flipping the roles. You're flipping the roles from them telling you what they're gonna do, to you giving them guidance. And, and let them operate within that guidance, that's a completely.
It is.
Set of roles and understanding.
And I want them, I want us as well, in the whole process of, to express appreciation for what they do.
Of course, yeah.
Because I think they don't feel appreciated now, but I think it's because this is all gotten all tangled up.
Yeah.
So, so, I could say to the mayor, like, when she asked. Sarah, let's talk about boards and I do updates. We can, I can version and say, well, I'm bringing this to the board next time, gonna talk about trees and whatnot, or whatever. Instead of saying, no, I don't have anything, I haven't heard anything, I can say, this is what I'm bringing to the board, uh, next meeting.
From the council.
From the council. And that at least have everybody, at least.
Yeah, I think that's more appropriate, I, and I like the idea that you brought up of them reporting to us directly.
Absolutely.
Do you think that's good?
That line of responsibility and authority gets clearer when you do that.
Yeah.
Then you store down their actual projects too, there's something.
Projects, exactly.
Do we can have.
In chunks, instead of it just coming. Without regard of the timeframe or what's going on, or the money situation, they just say, this is what we need, go, instead of us saying, hey. We need to tree situation, take care of, and this is the X, Y, Z amount of money we have for it, and.
Um, so, what, I, right? I was just thinking, uh, do we have boards that need to be organizations?
Oh, like their own independent nonprofit type of thing? Not that I can think of.
Because that's what I'm wondering, if we're holding back a board from actually having potential.
Yeah.
Because like, what I was looking at was historic Main Street, they're, they're talking about it, it's, it's national, it's big, it's huge, you know, and they have access to all this stuff, but as a board, they don't. So, I'm wondering if, if it's, if they should be an organization that's able to grab that grand money, grab those. So I'm wondering if, if it's, if they should be an organization that's able to grab that grant money, grab those things there. Because I think there's a little bit of a difference when they're just.
Yeah.
Right.
They, they don't have that authority with the, I don't think they're a five oh one C three, but if they do.
Yeah.
They're able to attack that grant money, bring in a lot more, more things, and then if I get, they'll get their own, they'll get their own authority.
We are exploring, um, with that one particularly, uh, the benefits of combining the Main Street board with the Creative District Board. So they would fall under that nonprofit, and so later in May, a group of us are gonna go tour, uh, I think it's Ridgeway and. Steamboat Springs, um, one of them has them combined, one of them doesn't, and we're gonna talk with representatives and see. If we can get some ideas on which model would be best for us. That is, that is something, but all the other boards and commissions, you know, Parks and Rec, um, yeah, uh, those types of things, I think they're best. Left is advisory boards for, for us.
Well, it's, it's, it's the one that I'm on, so that was the conversation.
It is a good question, though.
And I kept hearing them saying, you know, we can't get this, we can't get that.
You just volunteered to go on the field trip with us, just.
If it's on a Monday.
It's a great dish.
Yeah.
So, so just stepping back a little bit, the other thing you're doing is managing expectations, right? Which is really helpful, and you're also tamping down the potential for conflict. And you've got plenty of it.
Yeah.
Right? So building trust means being clear about expectations and roles, we see this all the time. Darcy's just the most intelligent person I know about boards, right? And when you can manage those relationships and they generate a lot less conflict. That's gonna be a really good thing for the community and for you. There's a lot.
I got training.
What's that?
Loop it, there you go, training.
You gotta go?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, sure.
Vermin.
Regal.
Well, stick to the process once you commit to it, because the conflict might escalate in the beginning. But once it's finished, it'll be much better. So don't be like, oh, this isn't working because there's the conflict, because people hate change.
It's true.
And this is a big change, and it's also a big change in power.
Yeah, I think if we can establish the framework and I just stick to it, you just have to make sure that we enforce it and not deviate from what we state.
I like, um, council member, Earl Tree's idea of having just some overarching provisions for all boards and commissions. That say, this is how you operate, this is your annual requirements, that type of thing. Then for each one that we establish, we can at least put a little description of, you know, what their focus area is.
Right.
But I like, I like the idea of everything being consistent.
Yeah.
Across the board.
Yeah.
Across the boards.
I get it.
Boards across the boards?
Yeah. We're gonna be consistent across the boards.
This is probably one of the most difficult areas.
I do, but it doesn't have to be.
Yeah, agreed.
It doesn't.
And I think it's.
Yeah, it's cool.
Yeah, but if, just if you look at our ordinances, they're whack.
Yeah, let's take a five minute break.
They talk about, they talk about boards and commissions and.